Proceedings this evening, I'll have Attorney Brian Maraz, so I run the newly elected trustees.
I state your name.
Adam.
Come on out here. You can stand in your spot.
Okay.
I, Adam Hopkins.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of village trustee.
And the duties and the office of the village trustee.
For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
He'd like to come down there.
I state your name.
I'm present.
P L Evans.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
To duties of the office.
To duties of the office.
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
For the village of Bartlett.
For the village of Bartlett.
According to the best of my ability.
According to very best of my ability.
Does she wish a new lock?
Would you promise her?
If you saw that little girl, that's my granddaughter, Grace. And if her mother and I have anything to say about it, you're gonna see a lot of her later on.
Thank you, Brian, and welcome to the new trustees and to the tenured one. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Again, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for May 15, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's? Here. Cameron? Carbonaro?
Here.
Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. I've requested that Victor Ayad give us our invocation this evening. Pastor Ayad?
I want to say thank you for having me. I'm sure you couldn't pronounce that name. I'm actually born and raised in Nigeria, so that was a tough name to pronounce. You did, okay. I give you like a C, C+ or something. Why don't we bow? Heavenly Father, just want to say thank you, Lord, for all the wonderful things you've done in our life. Thank you for this wonderful men and women that come together and make big decisions, Lord, for this city, God. We thank you, Lord, for Bartlett. It's been a wonderful place. I know personally for myself, for my wife, and to have our church family in here, God. I pray, God, that you bless this night and everything that I said here, and I pray your hand to be upon each and everyone here. And I pray you just continue to help the trustees, oh, God, and give them wisdom to make good decisions that'll help the citizens of this city. Lord, we thank you for tonight, and we give you praise for all the wonderful things you've done. And we also pray, oh, God, for everyone in Bartlett, God, and all the families and people that live in this city, God. I pray that your hand to continually to be upon each and everyone. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Ayadi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one liberty, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a lot of newcomers in the crowd, they don't know the routine. Next, we go to our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered routine and enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member still requests to remove or add something from the consent agenda. Is this, at this point, is there anything that a board member would like to add to the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to add A1.
A1.
I'd like to add F1.
If anyone objects to adding or removing?
I think it's good with me.
Does anybody reject? Have any problems adding Bartlett Park District easement agreement?
No problem with that at all.
Okay, so that's getting added. Anything else? So, at this point, I entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove the minutes and to add A1, Iglesia Batista Federal Site Plan Amendment, and...
F1.
F1. Bartlett Park District easement agreements from sewer improvements.
So moved.
Get it all? Okay. It's moved by trustee Cameron, seconded by trustee Aaron's. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's? Yes. Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Daney.
Correct.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's? Yes. Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for committee minutes on April 21, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Daney. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's? Yes. Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Abstain.
Hopkins?
Abstain.
Ranky?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move this along to Treasury Report. There's none this evening. We have a few proclamations this evening under the President's report. Actually going to flip the order on this a little. I'm gonna do the liquor license renewal and number four first. Intention is to approve the following liquor license. Highland Park CVS LLC, DBA CVS Pharmacy, Tipsy Monkey, Inc., O'Hara Advanced Enterprises, Inc., DBA The O'Hara Pub and Restaurant, TNL Evergreen LLC, DBA TLs Four Seasons, R N McRaine, Inc., DBA 7-Eleven, Sri Kodhir Vera Group, DBA 7-Eleven, American Drug Stores, DBA Asco Drug, Smoke and Pit Barbecue, McCaffrey, Inc., DBA McMays Tavern and Grill, Taproom Hospitality LLC, DBA The Still Bar and Grill, Bond Drug Company LLC, DBA Walgreens, Ing's Son &amp; Son, DBA Silver Lake Restaurant, and Ara Tiamy, Inc., DBA Town Liquor and Food. Four class A will also include Downtown Bartlett, Inc., DBA Papa Pacinos. And if there's no disagreements, I intend to renew those liquor license. Moving right along to the proclamations. Starting off with the National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. Whereas the members of the Bartlett Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Bartlett. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the Bartlett Police Department has grown to be a modern, scientific, and nationally accredited law enforcement agency which increasingly provides a vital public service, now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, call upon all citizens of Bartlett and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10 through May 16 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Bartlett to observe Friday, May 15, as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in a performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes dated 5th of May, 2015. Next, we have a proclamation for Bike Month, recognizing May 1 through 31, 2015, as Bike Month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans. And whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. And whereas the Village of Bartlett and the Bartlett Park District, Spin Doctor Cycle Works, American Charter Bank are promoting bike riding events throughout the village. And whereas the League of Illinois Bicyclists is educating cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles at www.bikesafetyquiz.com, which I took. Whereas the League of American Bicyclists and independent cyclists throughout our village are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, Village President of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane County, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Bike Month in Bartlett. And Terry Witt would like to present me with my silver reward.
And the other trustees. Yes. As safety ambassador with the League of Illinois Bicyclists, I congratulate our village president on successfully completing a bicycle safety quiz along with members of the board.
Yeah, and it's not as easy as you might think. It's a really learning process, so.
That's right.
Yes, and at the break, especially if you've got kids involved. Take the...
Next time. And finally, a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas safety is the highest priority of the highways and streets of our village and state. And whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption and road wear, and contribute in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And whereas it is especially important that citizens of our village and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. Whereas the members of ABATE of Illinois, a brotherhood aimed toward education, continually promotes motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers, education programs, and the general public in our village, state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 102,000 participants in Illinois over the past five years. And whereas all motorcycles should join with ABATE of Illinois in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness to citizens of the Village of Bartlett. And whereas the motorcycles of Illinois, motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations for the enhancement and support of these organizations. And whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite the safe sharing of roadways within the Village of Bartlett and throughout the great state of Illinois. Therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, in recognition of 29 years of ABATE of Illinois, Inc., and the other 638,000 registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of continued role in Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2015, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the Village of Bartlett and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve the safety and awareness of our roadways.
Is there anybody here from Abate?
No.
Too bad.
That does it for the President's report. Moving along, we'll go to the question and answer portion of the board meeting. Does the board have any questions for the staff or anyone else at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point, would anybody like to address the board? Terry?
Thank you. Terry Witt, 471 South Western Avenue. I'm also Director of Advocacy over at Spin Doctor Cycle Works, and as we just heard, it's Bike Month in May. But we've got bicycle events on a calendar in the month of May and June. There's something for everybody. So, if you didn't get a copy, I will leave a stack out on the table as you leave. You can take one. I would like to draw your attention, though, to two that are marked on the calendar. You've got one in front of you. On May 20, Wednesday evening, we're joining the Ride of Silence. It's an internationally coordinated bike ride. It's on all seven continents, including Antarctica. We're leaving at 7:00 PM, so we're meeting at 6:00 PM, or 6:45 PM. It's Spin Doctor Cycle Works. It's 10 miles, 10 miles an hour, 40 minutes. Nobody gets dropped, so come and join us. The other one is the Tour of Bartlett, June 13. We're meeting at American Charter Bank at 9:00 on Saturday morning. First six miles, nice, easy route around town. Anybody can do that. From there, well, then we get out on the road and ride, and, well, we still have people on that. So, I would encourage everybody, put some air in your tires, water in your bottle, helmet on your head, follow the law, and have a fun ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? Grace? Thank you. Grace, for that, did you get that minute?
Grace, did you want to come up and say something?
Hearing none, moving right along. Next item on our agenda are the Standing Committee Reports, the first of which is Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by trustee Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item was addressed on the consent agenda. Second item, the RTA Technical Assistance Through Governmental Grant Agreement. Jim, perhaps you could orient us on that.
This, thank you, trustee Ranky. This is the follow-up to the original commitment that you made back in December, where you authorized our application for the execution of the technical assistance program to the RTA. We applied for this grant as a outcome from the Economic Development Commission's recommendations on improving, on how to improve the downtown. We received the grant funding of $100,000 with a local share of $25,000. We've gone through the selection process. They hire, they put it out in RFPA, the RFP, the RTA collects those for various consultants. We have a team that reviews them with the RTA's team, and we're soon to bring the consultant back to you. But this actually commits us to following through with the grant and our local share of $25,000.
I just wanted to clarify that our share is limited, $25,000, not to exceed.
That's correct.
Okay. And the first monies that are gonna be spent on this study, that's gonna be spent by the RTA, not the village?
They probably will invoice us periodically through that, but generally it will be that way, yes.
Okay. What happens if there's no state funding?
This is already approved in the RTA's budget. So, we're not the only town that has received this, so we had to, when we did that ordinance back in December, it was the towns that really wanted to continue going, and I think there's eight towns that will receive the funding, so they, RTA, puts it in their budget at that time. So, this is in the RTA's budget.
Thank you. Questions?
When will the study be complete?
They, roughly, you're looking at a 10- to 12-month timeframe based on the consultants that we reviewed. We reviewed four different consultant packages, and their timeframes were within that, within that schedule. There will be a public input sessions. All of them have that. There will be apps. There will be information put out on the website. Will be, we will have a steering committee that we will have that will guide the study through this. So, they're roughly all in the 10- to 12-month, depending on which consultant is selected.
Who's gonna be on the steering committee?
We haven't informed that yet, but they recommend several, they recommend elected officials, commissioners, citizens, business owners, and then some of the RTA people are also on it.
Great, so this will be an opportunity for the public to provide input?
Yes.
Terrific. Okay, so having said all that, I move to approve Resolution 2015 dash...
35?
35. Resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Regional Transportation Authority and the Village of Bartlett to develop a downtown transit-oriented development plan.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cameron. Is there any discussion? I guess the one question I would have, Jim, and I think this has already been answered, but what do we expect to receive out of this? Detailed plans or a generalization of what most people along a train line do in order to, do we, I'm just kinda getting in my mind what we should expect to get back when it hits our desk again?
I think the end product will be a planning document that will guide the growth of the downtown for the next 10 to 15 years. It'll be in the form, they will also use social media. They'll get, have public outreach. There'll be some specific design plans for specific areas for redevelopment, and for how, also to continue with not only redevelopment, but some opportunities for new development in the downtown. So, it'll be, all the towns that have taken this task on have some pretty detailed information that comes out of it.
And as trustee Ranky had mentioned, are the people that are doing this study actually going to be available for public input to say, you know, these are the ideas we've already had? Do they go historical data? You know, we've tried this, this isn't work, hasn't worked? So, they take all of that into consideration?
Throughout the process, there's public review, but also the consultants, whoever, whichever is selected. They, they do inventory of the downtown land use. They go on past experience of other towns they've worked with and done the same type of thing. So, they're, and they're all pretty top-notch planning firms that are in the, in the Chicago area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for...
Okay. Any other questions or?
No.
Hearing none, will clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's? Yes. Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky.
Planning and zoning.
Okay. Next on our agenda is under the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
President Wallace, there is no report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next on our agenda is Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daney.
I have no report this evening, but I just want to make a remark. Played golf on Monday, and of course, is in great shape, so let's get out there and play. And if you need any lessons, don't see me, okay? Call Phil Lynch.
I don't see that on the agenda, right? All right, thank you, Chairman Daney. Next item we have on the agenda is in the License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Aaron's.
Oh, thank you. All of our items were taken care of in the consent agenda, and I am happy, happy to invite everybody to the Memorial Day Walk, which will be on, well... The day after Memorial Day. No, it is on Memorial Day. And please bring everybody. I think we all forget that what we do with our kids carries on, and this is a great tradition that Bartlett has for the Memorial Day Walk. Although it's not on my committee, I just thought it'd make...
Oh, it is. It's Memorial Day, so you're open. I'll give you open mic.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Next item we have on the agenda is under Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, on our Standing Committee Reports, we have the Public Works Committee, Chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. However, the one item that we did have has been put under the consent agenda, of which we're quite happy to do.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron. That's the extent of our Standing Committee Reports for this evening. Next item on our agenda is new business. Is there any new business that anybody would like to bring up for the good of the order?
Yes, I have something. I would like to reevaluate our decision on the utility tax.
On the what? I'm sorry.
Reduction of the utility tax. Last meeting, we actually had a resident come in and ask us to take a look at a specific gas tax. And we have asked people to come into the meetings to give us their opinion, their views, and anything that they have to say. He specifically asked us to take a look at the gas utility tax, and what we approved was a reduction in the electric utility tax. So, if we can maybe reevaluate that next meeting and decide on a different fund?
I have a question. I, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but we've already passed the budget.
It's not gonna change anything.
From the budget comes, is this more appropriate to discuss at levy time?
I think you can discuss this at any point in time. I think the implementation of this is something you might want to look at towards levy, but I think the, the ability to discuss it is something that you should do whenever the board wants to.
The only other thing that I might add is that, you know, obviously, you're not happy with what was done. But if we keep grinding and grinding and grinding away, we're never gonna get anything done. So, if this is something that could wait until tax levy time, which is the only time we can really change it, then let's do that. Can we do that?
From a resident's perspective, I brought up a suggestion.
No, I'm talking about from a legal perspective.
It's one fund or another if we decide to move it.
We can't, we can't change...
Yes, we can.
What we send to the county mid-year.
Has it been sent yet?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, that's something I didn't know in our policy.
The electric utility tax had to be filed right away, and that's been filed with ComEd, because they had to get it in place as of June 1. So, they needed it before May 1 to implement it and calculate all the bills and everything to start that process. So, I sent it to their attorney directly, and then subsequently sent it on to who he directed. So, that abatement, or that reduction in the electric utility tax has already been passed by the board and then sent on to ComEd, so.
Okay, since we've already crossed that bridge, then, then trustee Carbonaro, would it be your intent, then, that we sort of look towards next, next budget cycle? We start looking at the gas tax? If we're already locked in the electric tax, then maybe we start gearing up for the gas tax? We could do that in relatively short order. We could start those early discussions at maybe the committee level?
Well, I guess that would be an option, wouldn't it?
That seems most appropriate, and by that time, maybe we'll have an opportunity to find out what Springfield's doing also, you know?
If they know.
Thank you, trustee Carbonaro. Is there any other new business to go to the order? Couple things I would add. I didn't get a chance to talk about it either, but the Poplet Creek Church is having an event, and it's, the amplifier permit request was on, on a, the consent agenda. And it's, the amplifier request was on the consent agenda. But it really is a community event. It's a free event. It's a community event at Poplar Creek Church. They've got two secular bands and two Christian bands, and it's supposed to be a big event. So, I'd really like people to pay attention to that this year. That'd be a good idea. I know the police get involved once in a while, so just for traffic safety and stuff. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to question and answers. Any questions at this point? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We will be going right into the committee directly following the board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Ranky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aaron's? Yes. Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes, yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.